What?
Hello everyone.
I didn't hear it, I'm still trying to.
My game one more time.
Sorry.
Mike Eberi, Henry Jeff with Pro West.
Henry, do you have the last thing? Great, alright.
Thank you.
Just for the record.
Mike, you've got the dirty beats on today.
Yeah, we we got a great tour of B3. Quite a project, we'll have to show it to you guys.
How about now?
Yeah. Let's go.
Alright, our meeting is, welcome to our study session. Today is May the 24th, time is four twenty.
Dr. Regu, a feedback somewhere.
We are now in, I'm now called meeting to order. I'm on mute.
Microphone nearby. That should be better.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Dr. Regu, if you could pull up those documents and I'll start the presentation. President Wells, member of the board, thank you for this study session.
Thank you, Ray.
As you know, yesterday was the deadline for receipt of proposals for the Bond Management Construction Management, RFP. We received seven proposals, we're still going through them to make sure that that they dotted their i's across their t's, but they all look on the surface that they were responsive proposals. And in no particular order, I'll just read it into the record, who responded. Answer Advisory, and I think it's up there on the screen. CBRE. Under Solari. Under Solari. If I could pronounce it correctly. Hemi. C U M M I N G, Hemi. Telecue. Eric Garnon Engineering and Management. And Rochlin, R A C H L I N, I'm not sure if that's a correct. So those that should add up to seven, I believe, is that correct?
That's great.
Yeah.
So we're doing an initial review of those seven. And what I can tell you at this point is that of the seven, five of them have indicated that they're okay with the contract parameters that we provided them. So if you remember, there was an amendment on the RFP where we had our attorneys draft a contract. And five of the seven proposals, they accepted the language of our draft contract. The two that didn't, Ms. Marcus, was CBRE. Is a, are probably the biggest firm, they're worldwide, they're huge. And then Telecue had reservations on contract language. So five of the seven accepted our contract language proposals. And at this point, we continue to go through the proposals, if you can put the ranking criteria, Dr. Regu, we can talk about that. Because I want the board to have some input on that.
Please. Wait, on the contract, you can negotiate.
Yes, yes, we can negotiate. One of the things, one of the reasons we put that contract language in was because of the board's concern about indemnification language. So the fact that five of the seven firms accepted our indemnification language probably will go a long way in this process of getting a contract signed. If that, if those are ones you choose to go forward with. So you can see here, these are our rating metrics on the screen. And we've assigned percentages, so I'll just go through them quickly. Alignment with district goals is 5%. Management team technical expertise, 5%. Program construction experience is 7.5%. Demonstrated interface with DSA, OPSC, State Allocation Board, 10%. Demonstrated experience interfacing with DTSC and Calgem, 10%. Experience with construction adjacent to public transit, our municipal projects, 5%. Experience with oil well abandonment, 5%. Availability of qualified staff, 5%. General approach to providing services, 2.5%. Approach to communicating with district administration and board, 5%. Approach to developing and adhering to project schedules, 5%. Pricing, 20%. And then the final oral interview and presentation at 15%. So if the board wants to making changes to these percentages, as long as they add it to 100, you go right ahead. Do anything that seems out of sorts.
So the ratings are for compatibility, so they're 4%.
Right.
Where does this matrix come from? Is this an accepted one that's used universally, or is this the one that we have wanted to set up with our brands?
No, this is kind of a universal structure, but we added things related to like the oil well and the public transit, things that are unique to the district, but the other ones are pretty much standard.
At this, at this point, how important do you feel the oil well abandonment remediation would be?
Well, we still have three left that we have to do something with, so it's fairly important. And going through these, and I have not read all of them, page, you know, back to front. There are a couple of firms in here that have experience with oil well remediation, the ones that I've got to so far. So I was kind of surprised, shocked and surprised that some people do have experience with this already. But I think it does bear some point that we need to assign to that, but if it doesn't need to be, whatever we have there, 5%, it could be, it's likely it's smaller or whatever.
Because they're not doing that.
Right.
And that is the same with the DTSC and Calgem.
I would say probably those, yeah, I think those would probably be more important.
For me, given the na- sorry, given the nature of some of the issues that we've seen, I, I mean, I think that the approach in communication, both with district administration and the board feels a little bit low to me. I would also say that the 15% substantive that's applied to the oral interview and presentation, that to me, oral interview and presentation just gives us a better understanding of the other substantive areas. So I, I mean, for me, I wouldn't necessarily put 15% on oral interview and presentation. To me, what I would be looking for more when I look at these buckets is, is just the overall kind of communication, feedback, just how, how are we kind of working together? The, the 5% there just feels a little bit low to me, but that's my first instinct.
Yeah, I think from developing engineering schedules, technical experience, manpower experience, I think are more important than the demonstrated in a basic DTSC, but I think DTSC is important, but I don't think it's more important than the experience overall.
I'd agree with that.
So we could increase construction management team technical expertise to 10%. And then management team experience to 10%.
How are you differentiating technical experience and team experience?
Technical experience is more targeted to a specific.
In what way?
Let's say they've dealt with some type of specific seismic issue. And team experience is really, they've been in the business 20 years, they've been in the business 30 years, they, you know, as a team. And technical expertise would be, I'd be looking for, you know, people on staff that have dealt with, you know, seismic really for us. Modernization is really for us, things like that.
I mean, but a construction manager that's been doing this for 15 years versus someone who's been doing this for five years, where is that?
That would be team experience.
So I would say that that's that's the way to go.
So team experience, so longer in business.
Demonstrative experience is a concern.
I, I am.
I mean, somebody's been doing this for five years versus someone who's been doing this for 15 years.
I'd like to know what capacity they're serving in other areas, in other districts or jobs or whatever, if they're doing program management or construction management. I would like to know.
Would that be a, like a question that we've asked during the oral interview?
I would imagine that they would have people that, I mean, they're having people that are on the project and they're having someone that's ever seen on a bond management level similar to how we were structured before. So you have one or two project managers on a project. And then you have someone that's managing the program in terms of the payoffs and for engineers and what have you on that, on that broad, the overall level. So I think that it's, you know, how are you differentiating that, differentiating that bond versus?
Program management versus construction management. What you're saying is program.
They get kind of using a chain.
They get, we don't, we need good program management, that's what we're looking for. We don't necessarily want dueling construction management on our sites.
Don't we have in terms of progress, the construction portion?
Yes, that's why I'm advocating for the program.
The availability, I mean, I assume that any of these companies can work with Pro West. Because they're the one that's under contract, complete construction, obviously. So if, if, what I'm concerned about is the ability to step in at this time and keep going forward, so that we assure the community that we are, there's no hiccup in this, we're going to keep going. And in other words, we're keeping it going. I think that's very important.
Alright, so you're just going through the process now?
Yes, I'm, I'm, what I'm hearing is that a little more weight towards technical and or team experience?
Yes.
A little less weight on the interview.
And I put a little less weight on the SC.
So less weight on the oil well. Anything else? Any of those categories that I could get rid of?
No, they all seem necessary.
Is the pricing component?
I think, you know, public, that they're working with public works and schools and number of years working in, at school districts. How many schools have you done, how many projects have you done that, you know, at what, what levels?
That would be kind of their team experience.
And, you know, how many schools have you done?
Right, right, exactly.
Specifically schools.
Pricing 20%, is that too high, too low? And important to, is that important to the board?
What are you actually referring to when you say the pricing?
So the, the pricing methodology. So with many of these firms, Ms. Marcus, they just charge an hourly rate plus reimbursables and don't necessarily charge a construction fee. So in our, under our current method, we pay for hourly rates for employees, plus reimbursables for things that they need to run their office and other, you know, other people they have to employ. Plus, we also pay a fee of the construction cost. Some of these firms don't have that fee. Some of them have, they have more, just a fee for the employees.
So we're putting 20% on the way that they do.
20% on while we think the total cost is going to be.
Not on 20% this.
No, no, they're not going to get 20%, Ms. Marcus.
I'm telling myself, where's this 20%?
Can you negotiate that?
Yes.
The 20% is the way to be evaluated.
Right, this is the way to be evaluated.
I, I'm curious to see how many ask for a fee, because I fundamentally, I think it's, I don't think it's good for us to have a fee. I, I mean, I would be more in.
So I, well, five of, five of the seven have waived the fee.
I, I.
But I have looked at the other parts of their fee arrangement. They probably make it up somewhere else.
Right.
Well, I just think that fundamentally, having a percentage of construction just.
So five of the seven, as they have said in their proposal, they don't have to have that fee.
But their hourly, how are the hourly rates?
Yes, yeah.
Well, and they made double staff.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think the staffing should be meant to work. And I think, yeah, but I mean, I think that, like, for me, I would want to see that you're able to have a staffing plan and be able to see that, you know, what that looks like. And it's not that they're just going to dictate, they're going to have the staffing to make up for a fee that it's actually going to.
I find that interesting, Wade, because I looked under several other districts that are recently engaged in program management with other firms. Don't know any from our list, but, but some that were from the initial list, and they all have fees.
Yeah.
And the contracts, so it's where that you're saying they're going to waive the fees.
Yeah. Well, they waive, they, they don't have a fee connected to the hard cost of the, of the project.
Right.
I'm sure there's fees, other fees.
Right.
Also, the else.
Okay.
Right.
So.
Alright.
But the 20% as a weighted value is okay.
Um.
Too, not too high, not too low.
Yeah, I know, I don't know, I can start to say when the.
I, I think, I mean, I think it's relatively important at this point, because then what's, what's some of the reasons that we're changing out our management? Right, if not to be, the whole point of this at the beginning, if we all remember, the conversation was around, we didn't go out for one originally, although we did, and we didn't get competitive pricing and all that. David brought up the pricing issue, so I think, I think it is important.
I, when we say what the pricing is, I think you have to really look at where, where the pricing is to your point. You can't, there's fees that are put into other places, so.
Yeah, I think I share.
What control do you have over the fees?
I think I share with the board, you guys have a Google Doc that has all the proposals in it, I would like to share it with you.
Oh, are they, are the proposals?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay.
So you can take a look at it, but what I'm, what I'm hearing from you is that 20% is too low, that should be.
No, I think it's fine.
I, I'd like to look at.
That's probably the most important.
You have to. It's the highest thing on there, and that's fine.
And I might like to look at.
Yes, so they're.
And then maybe.
Alright.
Thanks.
The next item. The IOR update. We received 10 proposals, I believe. The director, Percy, and I did a ranking separately and partnered each other. Except for one that we argued about, we came up with the same four. And there they are in no particular order.
Sorry, Wade, Wade, sorry, what's the, but IOR?
IOR, the inspector of record, the DSA inspector.
We've got it, alright, sorry, thanks.
In no particular order, it's Nolan, BIS, BPI, and Sandy Pringle. All, you know, the RFQs, it was an RFQ, not RFP, the RFQ is really focused, we already know what these folks are going to do for us. These people all have experience, I mean, probably all 10 of those firms would have been fine. We focus on, what I focused on was, do you have staff available in July, staff immediately available? Do you have experience with modernization? Those that have experience with modernization? Have you been in any lawsuits recently? And, you know, of course, they have experience with school districts, those are PSA folks, and price, price was the final one with that. So we have them here, we can, what staff can do is we can recommend one or two of these to come in and speak with a staff or speak with a couple of board members and staff, kind of narrow it down if that's what you would like to do. I don't think we need a whole committee to interview these folks, because we know what they do. I mean, that's just my opinion, but if the board wants to do something else, that's fine, too.
Well, I need, I think we need to shepherd along as quickly as possible, because we need to get approvals from architects, engineers, and DSA on it. So we want to try to make it through July, we're going to get this coming.
But I would probably recommend that we, we narrow this down to maybe one or two and ask the principal from that company to come in and speak with, the member we want them to speak with, Dr. Regu, board members, myself. Does that work?
Yeah.
What are the two that you would prefer? I know you like Pringles.
I just like Pringles.
Me, too.
Why do you like them?
They have a lot of local school experience. The, the references of the folks, of my kind of folks, the CEOs like their work. And their prices are very competitive.
Then I, I saw that.
They, they're also in the districts that I was looking for, when I was looking for these. That company came up the most as one of the most used for districts in, like districts in our area.
Yes, yes.
I have a question about their fees. I saw their hourly rates, but then I saw they have other fees for like, for the closeout for admin. Is that common with, because I didn't see that on the other.
I'll have to, let me take a look at that and see, sometimes I hide that in the language somewhere.
That's important.
Maybe we'll wait, if we are getting back together again on the 7th for whatever reason.
Oh.
Maybe we can do that as a subcommittee or something before, before the meeting, you know? You know, I mean, that, yeah.
We can finalize it.
Is there a second, a second person, not in any?
No, I don't have. Great. Construction funding in three minutes, you want to pull that up, Dr. Regu?
Yep. So, you're running out of money.
It's like a YouTube video.
Exactly. So I'm working, there's basically two ways, well, there's multiple ways for a district to get money. You know, you can sell property and get a waiver from the state on the uses of the proceeds. You can sell property or sell assets and use it for construction, that's what we probably do if we wanted to go to that. You can get a COP, which is our certificate of participation, which basically is an advance on your property taxes. You can do a private placement, if you have really bad credit, you go to a loan chart and get a loan, you can do that. So districts have had to do that, we would never have to do that. But if you go to the next slide, Dr. Regu. We worked on a couple of illustrations of what it would cost, these are all interest rate driven. So as soon as these were produced for us, they were probably out of date the next day. But you can see in essence what it costs to borrow $10 million, and I think I had to do it in a $25 million, I think it's a million dollar increment, how much that would cost.
Okay.
And, and you have different varieties of repayment, 20 years, 25 years, 30 years. You could actually, there's debt service that you could capitalize in the beginning. So for example, if you knew that you're going to pass a bond at 25 or 26, you could defer any payments until that time. There's multiple ways that you can look at COPs.
If you did it as a straight loan, right? And it's a little tiny from here in my computer guide, so on the 15 million.
Did you have the 15 million, Dr. Regu?
Okay, so what are you paying me here, what's your payment on that?
So your payment, if you had level debt service for, for 30 years, your payment is $3.1 million.
Okay.
Basically, changes a little bit every year, like just else.
Okay.
Interest only, it's worth $2 million.
So really what you'd have to do, the practical way to do it, if you went down that path, is you'd have to line item that payment out of your general budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So doable.
It is doable.
But we would have to.
Change your, change your structure of your general budget.
Right. And even, but at the lower loan, the 10 million, which you know, if we go down this path anymore, it was less than a million dollars per year, which is doable.
Right.
That's certainly doable, if over 3 million starts to get, how do we wing that?
Right.
So, okay.
And the other option, too, for the board to consider is that, you know, right now you have a 30% reserve. Do you take out a COP and really, you know, do a, buy down a $5 million or $7.5 million? Take your reserve to 15 or 18%? Are you comfortable with that, that'll change your debt service?
I guess it would depend in the end, where our final cost of the project lineup.
Right.
Really what we need and when we need it.
Right.
That, that's what we determine.
The driving.
And I think, I think as we get closer to getting those answers, and we know that we have a little bit of breathing room to make this decision.
Right.
We would know that, because you could also just go into the reserve and not borrow that money, just use that money.
Right.
Or construction, you allocate, right, you reallocate it into the general fund and use it.
Right.
And then you just borrow less.
Also go in the direction of changing what we're looking for to build and to, that we need the money for. In other words, right now, we're looking at possibly the money that we are short of, what we could do with what we have. And then maybe deciding what we will do without, if we can.
You mean de-scope?
De-scope or defer?
Yeah.
I, yes, that's another conversation to have, but we, but what we do know, I think pretty much is that we can take ourselves through getting probability started, but can we finish it? And that's the big question without borrowing. Because maybe things work to the point where we have enough to start building C. We know we don't have enough to finish it, but do we have enough in our reserve to finish it? Do we have enough on a $10 million COP to finish it? And then defer everything, you know, those, we, these are conversations that we have to have as a board, but we can't have them until we have more solid numbers and, and a scope of work, a schedule. Because then we would know when we.
That's why I'm saying, do we know what the scope of work is going to be in months?
And is there any opportunity to value?
There's still some unknowns.
Too many.
Right, especially because we haven't dug. The unknown really focuses building C and the south side work, that's the unknown, right? So that we have to take a closer look at and get tighter numbers, so that we can make an informed decision. Because we can't now. And one of the reasons we can't is we haven't dug for building C, so we don't know what's down in that soil.
That's right.
So once we know that, then we have a pretty good idea of where to go. Because then it's a new building, and new buildings are a lot easier to budget than remodeling 100-year-old buildings.
Modernizing.
Right, guys?
Absolutely. The other thing that we'll need to look at in the future also is the possibility of a joint venture. Joint venture with the city of Beverly Hills.
That's what I was going to say.
Joint venture with a benefactor, a lot of rich folks around here, so.
Well, there's some of these large naming opportunities you can do. As far as the city of Beverly Hills, my thought about that is, would they set themselves up, would they be able to setting themselves up to loan that money? And have us pay them back at a lower interest rate?
Yes.
And that's what I would ask them.
Yes, well, certainly.
So.
That was my idea.
And maybe we could, they could be doing better with our interest payments than wherever their money is currently sitting.
It could be a win-win for both entities.
Yes.
Knowing that it's all connected to improving the JBA.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And the fact that they are talking about improving related and, and working with us and the school district and things that have been going on and liaison and so on.
We've worked very hard over the last couple of years in particular.
Right.
Right. I mean, I think they're going to want to see us as we are reorganizing and getting ourselves situated and having confidence that we're going to.
So, I think the next steps. So I think the next steps, colleagues, would be to push ourselves in a direction where we understand the scope and the price of completing our projects better. And really not have an understanding as best that we could, and have an understanding of where our current wallet sits and what we're gonna have to be going after. Because I would love to be able to, before even looking at COP, have Mary and I go speak to the liaison and say, look, this is what we're thinking, Michael, and sit down and say, look, we'd like to get this stuff done, if you want to do it fairly, we'd like to take a loan. You know, again, boop, and just keep going, just that way we can comfortably complete the projects. That's, that's what I want to do, get to that. Right, okay.
Thank you, board.
Thank you for doing.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad we're having this conversation.
Anyone have any other questions? Dave? All right, I'm gonna end this. I will officially end our study session, and the time is 4:51. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff.